Set it to everyone, right?
They don't, he's not on just yet.
And now her from Tom?
No.
All right, we'd like to welcome and call to, welcome everyone and call to order this study meeting for the West Valley City Council. It is February sixth, twenty twenty four. We're beginning at four thirty P M. in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. I'm losing my voice, so I'll apologize now, sorry. So we have, I'm not going to list everybody's names sitting here today for that reason. Councilman Fitz Umanu is on Zoom. We're anticipating Councilman Harmon to be here any minute. Harmon. Never says, never mind, he's walking in. And then we're also joined by Mr. Flores, our interim assistant city manager and Ms. Kamic, our city recorder. I'll turn the minutes of January twenty third, twenty twenty four to the council for discussion or emotion.
Second.
Thank you, Evan. Motion and a second, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Thank you, those stand approved. We'll now go for our regular meeting tonight. Was there any? Think you had Mr. Flores?
Yes, we have three changes. So first, we've added the reading of a proclamation for World Interfaith Harmony Week.
Okay.
Is at the request of my hometown Interfaith Council. And just so you all know, some of the members will be attending the meeting later. And there will be light refreshments in the lobby following the regular meeting. Uh, second, we added a resolution uh for the appointment of an A L J. Who will oversee employee appeals. Uh, this will be further discussed as an item on the study meeting agenda. And then last, we added the election of a mayor pro temp.
Any questions? On any of those additions?
There are you reading the proclamation?
I was not going to. I was gonna open it up to you guys. Who would like to vote to read the interfaith proclamation? Okay. Councilman Carmen, we'll let you do that. And there's, are there any other questions? Um, we'll now go to our first public hearing for next week, which is application S D one, twenty twenty three. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Steve Lehman with planning and zoning office. This application is a request from the city engineering division requesting petition to vacate all of fifty seven twenty west. This is a right of way that was plotted as part of the Cape Cod Estates number three subdivision. Uh, that plot was recorded in nineteen ninety four. Uh, so the map that you see up on the screen is the location of the stub. While we're on this slide, you can see the large triangular shaped piece of property to the south. I believe our ordinances in nineteen ninety four would have required what we do today, which is that if you're plating a subdivision, you provide a stub road in anticipation of future residential development. So that was uh the list for the stub road being provided there at the time. The city incorporated that triangular shaped piece of property was owned A two, which is agriculture at the time would have meant two acres per lot. So the next slide um just shows a zoomed in version. So you'll see that there are two homes that sit on the east and the west side of this stub road, both access the stub road. The reason for the vacation is that a number of months ago, the city was approached by uh Wallace Stegner Academy to put a charter school at this location, not only one, but two schools. When we learned of that, immediately our engineering office thought we do not want to have traffic filter from the school into the neighborhood. So uh the engineering division went out and met with both residents on the east and west side of this right of way. Both were in favor of the petition to vacate the right of way. So we just have uh three additional slides to show you, just to give you a flavor for the home. So this is the home that sits on the west side of the street. Uh, the next slide shows uh the road going to the south. And the next slide is just the home to the east. And if I can get Ken to go back to the last slide. So uh what will happen if your council approves the petition to vacate the right of ways? The city will go in and remove the waterway, the curb gutter sidewalk that exists, as well as the street. Uh, we will then go in and install curb gutter sidewalk across uh forty three or forty five thirty five south uh with a new drive approach and concrete drive that the residents would share. Um, both residents are aware of that. Both residents are in favor of that um petition. So we um know that charter schools uh certainly are are good for students, but they don't bus kids. And so parents bring children to the school. For those of you who are familiar with Monticello Academy Esperanza, if you're driven down thirty five in the afternoon, you probably want to be in the left lane. Um, they do spill out. And so we just felt this was a good opportunity for us to vacate this right away, which would help mitigate uh traffic into the neighborhood. That is our report.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Would the two homes then kind of expand their front yards into that?
Yeah, so I did. Yeah, so I did talk with the engineering division. So whatever improvements are taken out, landscaping would be replaced. And then you'll have a a system where a concrete driveway would be positioned.
Drive away down on the far end.
Correct. And by virtue of state law, when we vacate right of way, uh each owner ends up with half of that street. So property line would be down the middle, would be similar to a flag lot that served.
I guess that the applications for the charter school properties are have moved forward enough that this is pretty much a done deal or?
It is. In fact, if you've driven by there, under construction. Unfortunately, uh we don't have an opportunity to review those kinds of applications. State law trumps our review. There are certain things that the city can review, uh grading and drainage, some other issues there. But as far as uh site plan, architecture, landscaping, all those things are off the table for our review.
We put in our ordinance uh parking, loading and unloading space required for charter schools because Monticello is really bad. We're, this is gonna be really bad. Fifty six having cars parked all along there would sound like a nightmare.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we don't have the ability to to regulate. The one thing I will say about the site plan here um is that there is a fair amount of onsite stacking. So vehicles will come in off of fifty six. The lot, the drive will align with the drive on the east side of fifty six. Vehicles will turn north and then there will be a very long, almost as deep as the property is off of fifty six. So it'll be two lanes in each direction. So there will be a fair amount of onsite stacking. Uh, they'll then come across the front and then circle back out to fifty six. So we do believe that will help. Uh, the distance between the entrance and Cape Vista Way is approximately five hundred feet. So that's another. I mean, vehicles will be on fifty six. It is, it will help, I think, from vehicles turning and going west into the neighborhood. But with two schools, that's, that's gonna be a tough sell.
And then is Public Works gonna be the ones that demo the stub street or?
Yes, they will be taking care of all that work.
So our staff will do, we won't contract.
That I don't know. I haven't got into that level of detail. I just know what improvements will be removed and what will be replaced. I don't know if that will be work we do or if we contract that out.
Was there any consideration to putting in a sidewalk? So that if kids in this neighborhood want to go to these schools, they could just walk through instead of going out to fifty six?
Yeah, the issue when we vacate the right of way is all that then becomes private. And so uh the discussion was had early on and we just didn't see a way to to allow that to occur when we vacate public right of way.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
I I just want to better understand uh maybe the the jurisdictional lines then between or regarding parking. So um it's clear that, you know, what's onsite or what's on that? We don't have control over, but I'm sure that become a recurring or persistent issue of now traffic being backed up on fifty six or potentially causing a nuisance with cars uh lining up out there. Um, at what point, you know, can we impose or suggest, you know, traffic mitigating measures or anything like that in terms of those cars that are not on school property but out on the street?
Good question. Not sure that I know the the right answer. I do know that there there is a a shoulder on fifty six that most likely the vehicles will be parked in, which uh in most cases um they're there for a short time and then they move. Unfortunately, on thirty five, where you have Esperanza, there is no shoulder. So if you're driving west at two, two thirty, and you're not paying attention, they are stacked in the driving lane, which to me is a large problem. Here, we wouldn't have that problem. Um, but as far as jurisdiction on that, I I don't know the answer to that. And I don't think that because we we have a hands off approach on what we can regulate as far as parking. I mean, if they're, if they're in the drive aisle, I think there may be something to be said there, such as Esperanza here, because they're not in the travel lane. Um, and they're not going to be parked on Cape Vista. If they are, they won't be there for very long periods of time. So we get into our whole parking enforcement issue that we've had many discussions on.
We prohibit parking on thirty first.
Right.
Between fortieth and forty eighth. So in theoretically, we could do that if if this was a safety issue in Parkway or thirty fifth, that's something we could. I guess we could do.
I do know that U dot is um requesting that they install a median in fifty six hundred to avoid left turns in and left turns out. So it would be a right in, right out, which will help, I think, with the safety factor.
Much? Will it come down as far as this neighborhood street going out to fifty six?
I don't know. I just learned of the median today. Um, so I I certainly can follow up with with you on that. I know there'll be businesses on the east side that would be impacted by a median as well.
I know we don't have legal standing in requiring things for for parking um at these schools, but we still have the ability to to talk with them and to to encourage and maybe together come up with a plan to make things safer and have tried that approach with any of the schools, I wonder.
We have the ability to do that, certainly. It's our experience both in doing subdivisions, uh for example, on the charter school, it's on Silma Way. I won't say they're uncooperative, but they just, they know what they can do. And they're a little bit adverse to trying to placate to the city in our requests or needs. I wouldn't say that is the case with everybody, but um they push back on reasonable recommendations that we propose, such as landscaping and making your site look pleasant. So we do get pushed back on that, but we certainly can can open the door and and see if that's a suggestion they're willing to look at.
Is it the developers on the school that is?
Well, the folks that I've worked with is is both. So um yeah, just Wallace Stegner Academy is who we we deal with.
See, and I know Public Works has gone out and talked to Esperanza and to Onicello, trying to get them to stack differently and have different procedures. It hasn't really changed the problem. So our staff has gone out.
It was a terrible accident. But we can have to go up to Esperanza.
Those are?
Bad. I think Monticello's put out a few more orange cones, but
they still snake all the way back to Neil Armstrong.
Yeah. Inside those orange cones.
Yeah. No, not inside the orange cones.
Maybe this is something that we could bring up with our legislators to get some, I mean, safety of children is paramount. And if our state laws are making it more dangerous, then we should get those changed.
But um we could we could push the issue and not allow parking on Parkway or thirty fifth or fifty sixth. And then it puts it back into their hands of how they want to deal with drop off. The situation. Then we're not waiting for people to be ill to do something, because that could be ten years.
Right, but kids will, there'll be kids in years from now.
There will be. Yeah, we can do both.
One of the complicating factors here is that fifty six hundred is a U dot controlled road. So make sure where that jurisdictional line can be crossed, if it could be crossed.
Thirty fifth, right? Or they don't park on thirty.
And just speaking of someone who fought that battle for twenty four years, trying to get parents to see that there were parking lots, parking spots on the property and not out in the road. It's difficult. Just put it that way.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move to um application Z T eight, twenty twenty three, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So this uh application is a proposal to amend the city zoning ordinance uh specifically as it relates to uh blood plasma centers. And so a little bit about the uh the background on this proposal. Um, so we uh had a or inquiry about a uh blood plasma center along Redwood Road. And it happened to be very close to where the temporary homeless shelter is. And so we were we're concerned about the proximity there. And as the council knows, we put in the the staff for the issue paper. Uh, as we've tracked uh just homeless incidents in the city, that area around thirty fifth South and Redwood Road is is really kind of in the the center of um activity. And uh and the concern was having that that kind of a use in that close proximity is just not a good mix. And so this ordinance would um restrict uh that use uh along Redwood Road as well as thirty fifth South, uh east of twenty seventh west. So between twenty seventh and the river and then on thirty fifth South and then also along Redwood Road. So again, that the uh the change here is just limiting where those could be um within the city.
Hey, to the council for any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And then we'll go to application Z two, twenty twenty three and Mr. Pastrick.
And so this uh is actually a reason the council considered um uh just over a month ago for a property that is uh and I'll pull up a map here. So it's uh located at twenty two fifty six and twenty two sixty south, fifty seven west. Uh, you recall that Carlson Distributing uh owns the property and is looking to use the property as a repair. And uh this was uh previously, the request was uh denied. Uh, however, there's new information forwarded to the council. And I'll focus on the new information unless there are questions about um the application that we've discussed previously. So there were uh the proposal for the remodel of the the property or the remodel of the building. So uh originally, the proposal was essentially to um use the building largely as is. They were going to remodel the inside and do a little bit of touch up on the outside, but it was pretty minor. Uh, this latest proposal shows that they're looking at um adding new materials and and making essentially an upgrade to the exterior of the building. And so we've included these images in the development agreement. So in addition to the improvements proposed to the site, they would also be making these improvements to the exterior of the building. So this, looking at this particular view, this is the east side of the building, which should be the main, main entrance. And you can see um other sides of the building, for example, the top right would be the north side. And uh this shows also the the images on the bottom would be the west side and then the uh south side at the top. And so that's really the the new information. Again, these uh images are included in the development agreement. Uh, aside from those changes, it is the, it's the same uh that we presented over a month ago.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pastrick on this one? I really appreciate their effort in making the building look a lot nicer. So thank you for that. Okay, seem no questions? We'll now go to our ordinances. We'll start with twenty four dash zero eight and turn the time over to Chief Evans.
Good afternoon. Um, what this ordinance is, is um really an update to our code to follow the international fire code that we have. We have the ability to put what they call key boxes on facilities. The facilities we've chosen uh that that we need are facilities that have sprinklers in them. Uh, any facility that has certain amounts of hazardous materials or apartment units that have common areas. Um, what these key boxes are, it allows us to get into building. We don't have a key box um and we have to get in that building. It's pretty expensive when we take out one of their doors. Um, the other thing is, is we will get calls of the sprinkler system malfunction. It's dropping water. If we have to wait for a responsible party to get their their damages ten times what it would have been if we could have unlocked the door and shut the sprinkler system off. These boxes, we have Knox Box as a brand. Uh, there is only certain. We've done research. There's only three types of boxes. One's a residential box, which will not work. Knox Box is a key box, which we currently use. We have six hundred facilities in West Valley that already have these. This box, there's a key on each one of the rigs. It's one key. It's the same key for every box in the city. And then they put their key inside to allow us in the building. Um, the other box that is available is a touchpad like a combination. The problem with that is every time an employee leaves here, we would have to have the business at their expense redo their combination. And where we have six hundred of these in the city already, it just makes sense to keep going with this. And that's what this ordinance is.
Any questions?
If we're already using them in the city, why do we need new ordinance?
Well, because what this ordinance does, it allows us to to those three facilities, I told you, it will be mandated. Right now, right, right now, ninety nine percent of the time, they just do it. There's one percent that.
Don't see the.
I guess that's what you'd say.
Don't see the economy of the bus victims.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to our resolution twenty four dash twenty two and turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson.
Mayor, Council Eric Bunderson, City Attorney. Um, this is a um contract with a hearing officer. Uh, the committee to hire the hearing officer Matt a couple of weeks ago. Believe it was a member of the council and a citizen who happened to also be a member of the council. Um, and uh they were, they were able to go through some applications and decided uh on the person that we've been using for the last five years. Now, these hearings um happen pretty rarely. Uh, I think the last one was about four years ago that I recall. Um, but we've got to have it in place since we eliminated civil service several years ago. And um Mr. Drake does a very fine job when he is called upon to do it. We don't pay him unless he unless he um actually has to come work. And um uh we would recommend that you pass this resolution and approve the contract. Are any questions, concerns?
Any questions from the council? So I just had one concern. Um, the contract had one year and then auto renew every year. I was wondering if um the council would object to having the first two years, we review it before we move on? And then if everybody's satisfied after two years, then make it auto renew?
We could, I could just do that. Um, if the council wants, I can just do that internally. Since it auto renews every year anyway, I could just set up a calendar appointment where H R and I review the contract thirty days before it expires.
And bring it back to the council for approval?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
For the renewal.
We need to change the contract to say that it'll be reviewed by the council for the first two years?
I can just do that. I can just bring it to you without having to to modify it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but if at any point we feel like the services aren't meeting our standards, we can terminate the contract.
Yeah, and that's why I say I can just bring it to the council. Uh, like, we can just set up this time every year to to review it. And um if if for some reason we don't want to continue, we can just um, we can just stop it.
Yeah, to me, for somebody to be terminated is worse than just not renewing a contract, which is the same thing, but it just looks different.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that. And like I say, it's it's pretty rare that this contract gets used at all. It's just nice to have in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We now have resolution twenty four dash twenty three. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. This agreement is uh an extension of an agreement that we have with Salt Lake County Aging Services for them to provide transportation at the Harmon Senior Recreation Center as well as provide the city with some funding to offset the cost of of running the facility, including uh meal serving and the general operations of the facility. So um the uh the county pays us eighteen thousand dollars a year plus seven hundred dollars in supplies for providing the meal service. They also provide all. They also provide all the meals. They deliver the meals to us daily for, for the seniors. So this is just an extension of that contract to go through the twenty twenty four year. They don't want to go longer than that because they're, these contracts are certainly dependent on the funding that they have. And I will share that as far as facilities that are not Salt Lake County facilities, we're the only one that gets this kind of a, of a treatment, I think, just because we've been around for a long time and are serving our city and not requiring the city to provide those services. So this is a really great partnership that we have with the aging services with the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I know there was some concern among the people over there. Not residents, but those that come in about busing. And it might disappear with the county.
Yeah, so, so this year, the, our driver quit and it was quite a process to get the county to fill that position, but we had a candidate who was interested, who we kept saying, you know, we have someone who wants this job. There was a period of time, several weeks, that maybe even a couple of months, that the county was not providing that service. And so we had to provide that service and we couldn't do it every day with the staff that we have, but we did it, I think, two or three days a week. And so our staff picked them up at home and brought them to the facility. And it's for the people who can't drive, who probably need that the most, need that socialization. And so it, it worked out really well. We, we were able to accommodate that for a couple of days a week and then pretty much handed them an employee and said, this person is willing to do this job and we really like him. And so they finally hired him and so they pay that on their own expense. They pay for the trans, the vehicle and the personnel costs for that. And then they give us this money for providing the food service and providing the, the facility and just the office stuff that goes along with that.
Want to make sure it's still in the contract.
It's still in the contract. Yep. It's just a matter of keeping the person in the position. So hopefully we have a long term fix there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for thinking outside the box and providing them an employee.
Yeah. It's an important service for us.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to resolution twenty four dash twenty four, Ms. Young.
Yes, so this is an extension of an agreement that we have with the state of Utah that is a grant to develop the Wetland Park out at Parkway Boulevard and sixty four hundred west. It's, it's an extension of the timeframe. The original agreement was to be completed by December twenty twenty three, but we've just had some challenges with the, with the design of the facility. So this extends the agreement or the agreement for the project to be completed by the end of twenty twenty four. The other thing that's really beneficial to the city is they significantly reduce the match that the city was obligated from like twelve million down to two point seven five million. And most of that is stormwater money for, because it's a stormwater park in addition to another grant that we received through the state of Utah. So this is an extension and a reduction of, of the match to an agreement that was signed in about twenty twenty one.
Okay, any questions?
Can we see the design?
Yeah, I'd be happy to share that with you. Yep, and this, this initial phase is really infrastructure. It's a road, it's utilities. And then we'll be working with the school district to move some of their agricultural programs through the Granite Technical Institute out to this location. There will be some trails, but most of it's infrastructure. There, you know, there won't be a lot with the exception of some trails. But as, as we continue with the development, we're happy to share that the design is completed for the whole park. But we're just, this, this project that we have funded is, is just phase one. But I'm happy to share those designs with you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move to our consent agenda. And turn the time over to Mr. Flores, if you have any questions. All of these temporary pieces are mainly for the construction on forty seventh. And where else? Thirty two? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on. We'll start with our legislative update and turn the time over to Mr. Schertz.
Thanks, Mayor. How are you?
How about yourself?
We're hanging in there. We're halfway through the legislative session. So thanks for the opportunity. Give you a little bit of update where we're at in the process. Budget committees or subcommittees finished their work today and prioritize the budget considerations at the subcommittee level. Those subcommittee reports will be transmitted to Executive Appropriations Committee, which is the leadership committee, which will begin meeting next week once they receive final numbers from the state economists. So every year during the middle of the legislative session, the state comes out with renewed numbers as to what we're essentially budgeting to. Those numbers come out on Monday of next week and that will give us an indication of, excuse me, how much money is available for appropriation during this year. As I've mentioned to the council before, it's going to be a tight year this year. In the last two years, we've had over a billion dollars worth of surpluses in each of those two years, largely based on the ARPA dollars and CARRIS dollars that were coming to the state as a result of COVID and the federal programs that were a part of that. But those funds now exhausted and spent by the state. We're just really relying on the state tax revenues to support state programs within the state. The numbers that came out in December indicated that we were about flat. Everyone's anticipating that those numbers may actually be down, which will make it a very tight year for many of the budgeting requests. We don't have a lot per se in the budgeting request categories as West Valley City. However, myself, as well as the economic development team and city management team have been working pretty diligently on finding some funding strategies for the Maverick Center as well as the Cultural Arts Center. There's a host of different opportunities that we think there are some revenue opportunities there through different tax structures and opportunities the state may put forward. It still keeps West Valley City in the driver's seat in determining kind of what their fad is and the way in which they want to approach it, what, that would potentially give us new tools to address any funding issues that we have with those two facilities. So we're actively working on that. Should have some additional updates in the next couple of weeks as to kind of the direction those two issues are going. But with the tight budget year, the legislature does seem inclined to give local governments a little bit more flexibility in the way in which we can generate revenues locally to support culture, arts and programming within our community. So that's something that we're actively working on. In addition to that effort, we're also working on homelessness issues. As you've probably seen this year, it's not quite as active on the homeless issue front as it has been in previous years. In large part, thanks to West Valley City taking on the temporary winter shelter this year. That's taken a lot of pressure off the state in order to kind of figure some things out. There are a couple barrels I just want to briefly touch on. They are expanding the number of jurisdictions that will pay into the Homeless Services Investment Fund. This is the fund that all communities pay into that are not housing a homeless shelter or facility. They pay into that fund to help compensate those communities that are hosting a shelter for the kind of costs associated with that, whether that's public safety costs or others that we identify. So they have lowered the total amount that each municipality would have to put into that fund, but then have broadened the base in terms of the number of municipalities that have to participate. So historically, it's just been the cities within Salt Lake County that are participating. We've now expanded that to include the municipalities in Davis and Utah counties as well. So broader base, lower rate should generate more money for those communities that are acting as host facilities and host communities for the homeless shelters with throughout the state, which will be a net benefit to us here in West Valley City. The last thing I'll touch on, I know I've mentioned this to you, Mayor. But for others, there was some contemplation of actually doing a permanent homeless shelter out off of fifty six hundred west and SR two oh one. Right there where Mountain View Corridor, where there was that staging site for the Mountain View Corridor project there, fifty six hundred SR two oh one. Us working with the economic development team have been successful in getting the homeless coordinating committee to pull away from that site and not identify that site as a potential site for a permanent shelter, recognizing it was the main corridor or one of the main corridors into West Valley City. So I think, we think we've successfully gotten the governor and his team to pivot off that as a potential site. And we're going to be actively working on some redevelopment plans in that area as kind of a result of getting them to pull off of that. So that's what I've got for an update. Hopefully you're getting the weekly updates we've been sending in terms of the build tracker sheet. If you have any questions on the build tracker sheet. Madam Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. But that includes my update for today.
Any questions?
Can you tell us a little bit about DEI and also how that bill, if that bill passed?
Yes.
Out of the city.
Yeah, so DEI shouldn't affect the city. It was targeted specifically to institutions of higher education. And what the bill essentially said is that they would have to pivot away from those sorts of programs. They could still have programs that talk about diversity. But the major universities that had robust programs working on DEI, they were precluded from continuing in those programs. So that bill did pass. It's already been signed by the governor and will go into effect. It should have no impact on West Valley City.
I think without though, the one question I did have, and we worked really hard on some of the subs with the sponsors there, but we do fund in the amount of around, what is it, Mayor, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the West Side Scholars or West Valley City Scholars, which is facilitated through the Office of Student Inclusion. So that was just one consideration that I have in that we continue our commitment and support for our West Valley Opportunity Scholars Program in some way or form, however the university decides to pivot. But figuring out, continue that in compliance with the new law.
And we did, we did clarify that in the DEI legislation, it does not preclude you from having diversity-based scholarships. But there will be probably a change in, in the way in which the university handles those scholarships. So certainly there are many organizations throughout the state that are focused on that area and you would continue to have those scholarships. And Councilmember, I can get you more information about how those scholarships would work and any sorts of changes to the process that we need to do on our end as well. That would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now turn our time over to Mr. Welch for our finance presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Welch, the Finance Department Finance Director. In keeping with how we've been doing these presentations, I've addressed the three things. One is our immediate needs. Two is the longer range needs over the next five years. And then if there's any changes in our department, we're pretty simple. We don't have a lot of things going on. However, we do have one large project that has showed up as a program mod request for the last couple of years. And a little bit of background on this, this is our financial, financial management software that runs all of our payables. It keeps track of our, all of our assets. It handles our banking and it also handles our utility billing. So it's, it's a big deal. It's kind of the nerve center of the city. We are with a company that the parent company has been with, we've been with the parent company for over twenty years now. We're on our fourth type. We're in the process of trying to implement our fourth implementation of software right now. And unfortunately, it's taken about two and a half years to do that. And it still isn't running yet. That's caused us some great concern. The IT department has expressed some concerns about the security of this particular product, software. Meaning would it be subject to hackers or subject to possibly somebody breaching our security and getting into our financial system? Which you can imagine all kinds of issues that would cause. And so we've been very concerned about that. Within the last couple of months, I went back with some of my finance team and we visited with the company. We addressed each of these concerns and they have actually implemented a number of changes and have addressed the security concern. So that's been a good thing. They have also taken on our implementation very personally. We've spoken with their, their new CEO, which actually they've had about three CEOs in the last three years. So that's been part of the problem. And they've high prioritized the, making sure that our system works. So I put that on here because we've, it's something that if it actually blows up, we've got a real problem on our hands. It doesn't look like it's going to. It looks like it's going to be stabilized and we're going to be able to operate with it. The price tag on that, we've done a number of demos with other companies, everything from Oracle to SaaS to Tyler Works. All the big numbers, big names that are out there. And this is the price range that we're in. We're convinced that there is not a perfect package out there as much as we'd like to find one. But so far, we feel like this has been working well and we're going to be able to make it work. Now, if that changes, you'll be the first to know.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Welch? So with these new fixes, are we looking two years for an upgrade, five years? Yes, you were five.
I do appreciate that. They have, I am hoping that within the next couple of months. They're a little bit slower than we thought. We met with him in November. And they thought that they would be able to get us running first, first month in the next year, January. So far, they haven't. They've run into a couple of problems. They're running into some of the same personnel problems that we're experiencing and they are across the country. They're just having a hard time getting support personnel. And they've lost a lot of programmers. And it's, they're battling some things there, but they are making progress. They're keeping a good communication with us. And they're addressing the problems as they come up. So I expect something within the next couple of months. We should be looking at a new implementation that we can roll out to the rest of the city.
And then that new implant will be able to be usable for how long?
These seem to have a lifespan of about five years. That's been our experience. It could last longer, but you know, it seems like they usually find something shinier or newer within about that period and then we're subject to another change. One thing that the parent company is called Constellation Group and they're actually the pension fund for Canada. So they're very well funded. The subcategory is Harris Computer Systems. And our program that is under Harris Computer Systems umbrella is called Enterprise and they're moving to one called City Suite. So as they move towards that, they, you know, each division is expected to be a profit center on its own and it's caused some pressure on them. But we feel like that's, it's got some great capabilities in it and they have great support. And we're encouraged right now. So we're working with them and hopefully we'll have some progress on this that will continue.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to our strategic plan presentation for Public Works and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've never been accused of being an interesting speaker, so I'm trying to make up for that by using lots of AI-generated images. So control yourselves. Do I have control here?
Go ahead.
Okay, there we go. All right, this is just a, just so you've got a good picture of your, in your mind of, of our department. We're eighty in size roughly and of the, there's Hillary and I, the administration group. And some of my team members are here to heckle and cheer me on and I'm grateful for their presence. We've got the engineering division, the fleet management division, the street operations and transportation, streetlight and the utility billing and sanitation division. So the first thing I'm going to talk to you today about is from in our operations division, as we look forward to the future. We've been, so we had a lot of growth over the last ten years or so in the southwest corner of the city, which happens to be the place that we get the most snow as well. So the, over the last couple of years, we've actually divided our snow removal areas. We've had fourteen historically. We've divided it into, we divided that number fourteen area into two and have been servicing that area with a, an extra, one of our backup plows that we've not sold since, you know, since it's been replaced. And so one of our proposals this year is that we actually fund a truck for that fifteenth area, which would give us fifteen large trucks, either, either ten wheeler dump trucks, bobtails, or a slurry seal combo, the, the trucks that we use in the slurry seal system. And so this is just generally kind of a big overview of, of what our big picture purchase plan is so that you can see generally where we're, where we're looking to how we're looking to keep that snow plow fleet in its, in good condition. And we're historically, we try to keep in about an, an eight-year cycle on these, these vehicles. They go through a lot and they, they put up with a lot. And so yeah, just FYI, we're going to be proposing our budget under the Class C road fund to, to fund another truck. Our street sweepers, we're also requesting to fund another street sweeper. We have a fleet of four sweepers. Historically, we, we used to replace them once every year. And when I came in, I thought we could probably get away with every other year. So roughly a life, a, a turn in life of eight years when we're all done with the sweeper. But this happens to be a purchase year. And so you'll see that in our budget as well. Some other miscellaneous equipment for the, the operations division, a trailer for our paver, a gap patch machine, which is a machine that we use to, to patch potholes with a hot mastic product that, that works pretty well. You can do it in all weather conditions. And then this bottom item is just kind of in the spirit of the Marsh master disclosures of this is actually in our current current budget. We, this is a hydro excavator. It's like a trailer mounted tool that, that allows us to dig small holes that we can use for streetlights. But it can also clean out storm drains. We have lots of storm drains that are in backyards that we can't get our vector, the big vector into weird, hard to reach places. And so this hydro excavator is a product that we're trying to get. We've got it funded in our current. This hydro excavator is a product that we're trying to get. We've got it funded in our current budget year. But uh, we, we just haven't found the exact product that we love yet. So we, we demoed a product that we thought we were going to get and we decided against it. So. You may be seeing that. Um, so Operation My Hometown, um, there, I know there's some discussion in some previous uh presentations. Um, we currently support them in a handful of ways. Uh, first of all, we. Support them with some equipment. We have a bucket truck that they use. For a lot of tree removal and maybe some other miscellaneous things, but I think it's mostly tree removal they use it on. And, and then we also have three heavy dump trailers that they can use to haul material to the dump. They're very heavy and they really require at least a one ton truck. In speaking with Craig, Craig's been working with them and they have some requests for, for equipment. They've recently lost one of their, they had a Batco that was donated. To their program and operated by one of their volunteers. But uh, they've since moved on and they're not able to serve in the program right now. And um, we would love to support them by letting them use our own equipment, but our equipment is leased. And our lease agreement does not permit non-employees to use that equipment. And so. There are challenges, but we do see value in um, providing support to them in uh. With equipment and um, there could be discussions on um, you know. I would certainly, we could certainly use some of this, of these things in our own operations, but uh. But would likely largely function as a, as a backup to things that we already do. But. But as you're having budget discussions, know that this is a. Uh, these are things that could be beneficial to Operation My Hometown, which is definitely very beneficial to West Valley City. Um, and as we're thinking about potential changes to our program. Um, one of the complaints we get in our snow removal program is that we don't get to sidewalks very quickly. Um, so as you're all aware, residents are responsible to, to clear their own sidewalk. We have lots of places that are backyards on main roads that, that are pretty heavy pedestrian routes, but. But there is nobody other than us to click, to clear those routes out. And um. There may come a day that we may come and ask you that, make a recommendation for more people um, to be able to do this. And of course, we would. We have lots of other public works type functions that we would have them doing year round, but. But right now, when the phone rings and we get those kinds of calls, we, we usually can make it out to a. Uh, to do these sidewalks three or four days after the storm. And by then, they've been smashed down and they're hard and they're, they're really tough to get cleaned off. So. Just food for thought there. More food for thought is out of the shop. Um, one day I would love to cover. Some more of our outdoor. We have, we have a lot of good indoor coverage of our, for our equipment, but. But definitely in my long-term schemes, I would love to uh provide some more coverage for some, some of our equipment. And vehicles out there. This is more of just an FYI, our uh, street sign replacement project is actually, we're up and running now and we're. You'll start seeing those installed and, and so we're excited about that. Um, street lighting brief update, we are now fully staffed. We, a couple of months ago, we finally were able to get a, a second electrician. Very grateful for that. Um, and you, you also, you know, you know that we recently purchased a bucket truck. Um, which was kind of a long lead item that we, that took us quite a bit to, to get um into our possession and. We're actually making a recommendation that we include another bucket truck purchase in this upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Um, really because of the long lead nature that, uh, of that item. It's actually, we would not normally have planned to replace that. For another year, but we'd like to try to get ahead of that, ahead of the supply chain issues that we're facing. Um, we're making progress on our little infill, streetlight infill projects and we'll also be bringing another one. This year for you to, for your consideration. Uh, they're working on the design and selection of the areas that will be lit up with this next project. Um, like to talk about elite now. Um, so that this top uh graph. Is, is a graph that shows uh different things. Well, this, this is the top one is the vehicle, is a vehicle purchase price for a police car. Beginning in fiscal year seventeen eighteen uh through twenty-three, twenty-four. And what we used to be able to get for a little over thirty-five thousand dollars now costs us almost sixty thousand dollars. And so the next uh graph is our rolling stock fleet budget that we've had over the years. And so we used to be, we were at one point one million, we've, and we were. At one point three for several years and then just this last fiscal year, um, Mr. Pyle recommended. Uh, one and a half million dollars. Um, and then that bottom graph is just kind of a generic purchasing power of what we. Were able to buy with, with that rolling stock budget, given the price of those vehicles. So. Um, as you can see, we're definitely, even with that increase from one point three to one point five. We're uh, we're backed up a little bit on what we can do with that uh, with that rolling stock budget. This graph is uh, just a, it, it's kind of a. It helps you to visualize generically what our replacement cycle um would be, given the current price of vehicles. And where we have been historically around the eight-year mark, we would, we're definitely over the ten-year mark. Um, which is not where we want to be. If you're asking me where we want to be, we would love to see a, a six, five or six-year cycle. Which um corresponds with probably another million dollars into the. Uh, that rolling stock budget every year. And so. Um, I would love to try to get back to that eight-year cycle, which maybe represents a four or five hundred thousand dollar increase, but. I will take whatever we can get. So it's ultimately my message. The more, the better. It's really important that our police officers and the rest of the uh city employees have the right equipment to, to move around and do their work in. And so. Uh, we are definitely faced with um challenges, given the price of vehicles lately and everything else, of course, but. But uh, vehicles weigh heavily on the work that we do and are a very critical part of what we need. This A I image is one of my favorites because it puts a plow on a police car, which I think is great. I've not run this by the police chief yet, but she likes surprises. Yeah. Um.
It doesn't spell right.
Yeah, it, it's done very, there are lots of misspellings in these A I generated images and they are not our doing. That is. Completely the A I algorithms that don't know how to spell it. But uh, could.
I was gonna say, you could use that police car to clear the soil.
Let's do it. I'm on board with that. Um, another, another couple of program mods that you'll see in our budget are a fleet mech- uh mechanic certification program that I'd like to fund. That enables us to pay for um, our mechanics to get A S Es and A S E certified, among other types of certifications for the heavy equipment as well. Um, and then Eric has recommended that we purchase an alignment rack. We spend a lot of time running cars back and forth to an alignment shop. When uh, if, if he had some different equipment in our shop, he could. It, it's a, he, it's obviously saved the money on the, the alignment itself. And the math that we've done, he thinks it pays off in five or six years. So. I think it's a good addition and he's got a great place for it and that is there for your consideration in our budget as well. This is an FYI in our utility billing, the, our awesome group has found, they've, they've got a new service that they're rolling out. It's a pay by text option that people can. Uh, set up an account that they would basically get a text message reminding them of their bill and they can reply telling it to pay it. And then they're done. And it would come out of their account that they've entered in. Uh, it costs us a quarter, twenty-five cents for that transaction, but if we can save the cost of a stamp, we're, we're well ahead. So. Um, just an, an FYI, you'll probably be seeing that rolling out. Yes.
Got to a credit card or a checking account?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume you could go to either one of those. Yeah.
Cause I've run into some lately that only let you do it from a checking account.
Hmm. Yeah, I would imagine that this one would allow both, but I couldn't get the answer if that's something you'd like us to follow up on. Um, regarding sanitation, we always come to you and tell you that we're, well. Request authorization to purchase more garbage cans. And this is just kind of a, a fun visual aid for you to see how many garbage cans we have. And uh, roughly the age of them. We still have some garbage cans in our fleet of garbage cans that are from nineteen ninety-four when we originally picked, instituted this pickup program and they've performed very well, but. But uh, we will continue to recommend that we replace those cans. You'll notice the, the recycle cans. Uh, we, we bought a lot in two thousand eight when, when recycling went, when, when the program was begun throughout the city. Uh, sometime between, I don't know when this happened, but we also, we made recycling optional and people were able to opt out. And at that time, we were given a whole bunch of cans that we now use to, to restock and maintain the, the recycling group. So. We don't anticipate buying those until they're all out, but um, I don't know, this is in the fun fact region. Garbage cans are exciting. This is a, I'm going to give you a, a homework assignment between now and maybe next July to be thinking about the garbage services that we receive from ACE currently contracted. Our contract um will end, well, it will be completely done with this contract by July of twenty twenty-six. Which means at the end of this next fiscal year that we're going into, we need to be proc- procuring a new contract and give that new newly selected contractor. Plenty of time to get ready to implement our contract. Um, it may be the same contractor, may not obviously, but, but uh, your homework is to just be thinking about what that might look like and our current um. Services and potential services. And then uh, Operation My Hometown, I know there's another question in a previous uh presentation about dumpsters and we do provide dumpster support. Uh, who roughly at a cost of, so for the current system, we, the current setup of Operation My Hometown with three days of service. Happening on three different weekends in a month. Um, we paid this past calendar year sixty-three thousand dollars for a hundred and forty-three dumpsters. You know, so you're a little over four hundred dollars a dumpster. Um, so if, as this thing grows, we likely plan that it's going to cost. Another twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, at least for the next one area. But if, if you, if you have scaled this and had multiple days of service on the same day. That could potentially become a more challenging thing for, for ACE to be able to provide the dumpsters sufficient for that. And so that's. Just something we can think about as time goes by. And then I don't have a lot to say on these. I'm just going to move slowly through these engineering projects and let you. Uh, just formulate in your mind, these are, these are projects that are, the next two slides are projects that are imminent, either. Most likely within this next fiscal year. Some are out to bid, some are, they're, they're just things that are right on the edge of ready to go. You've been seeing a lot of right of way for, for many of these and, and so if you have any questions. Make Kobe answer them, but uh, but that's our. Big, really big pile of projects. They've got a lot, these guys are, are so busy and they've got a lot going on, but. Have done a great job of moving things through. And then these are kind of some of the upcoming projects that uh are either funded or partially funded or in the works. So. And then that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Dan at this point? So the big, the three big trailers we have for my hometown. Who hauls those around? I mean, they take a.
They take.
Pretty big sized truck.
Yeah, the volunteers, um, they just, they find volunteers that have big trucks.
Okay.
And so people that have the capacity to do it, you shouldn't, couldn't do it with an F one fifty, with an F ten truck. And so. They're very big. And, and really, even if you had a smaller trailer, I'd be so leery about putting it on a smaller truck. Cause you can easily load a small trailer with a really heavy load and, and overload yourself. So.
Well, I saw on here you had a small dump trailer.
Yeah.
So would that work on an F three fifty or?
Sure, yeah, it would. And, and really, I, a smaller dump trailer with a smaller load, you could certainly do with an F one fifty. Um, a common, a more common pickup truck. Um, it, you just have to be, we would. Um, need to provide training on how much they could put, put into those things is really what it boils down to. Cause we train them. Uh, on the bucket truck use and, and on the uh, the heavy dump trailers that we've got. We've actually produced little videos and. And um, and with the bucket truck, it's an in-person, like nobody uses that thing unless they've gone through our in-house training. So we're well aware of the risk that exists in having um, non-employees operate equipment. Uh, there is a risk of having employees operate equipment as well, but, but uh, it's, it's different. We recognize the. The value that Operation My Hometown brings and happy to work with them to get their people up to speed on using this, this equipment. But.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now um, ask Ms. Young to come up for our strategic plan presentation for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in, for Parks and Recreation, um, we uh have ours kind of split into a couple of, of uh areas as well. Our park maintenance division has uh continued to take on more and more property over the years with. Um, new parks that we've built, with tree scapes, uh, with the, the Mountain View Corridor Trail. Uh, the, the bike park, which isn't necessarily landscaped, but it certainly requires a lot more maintenance than open property. Uh, and then this year we have some additional parks coming on. Um, Sunset Hills will, will begin in probably about April. And then we have the what, Westview Expansion. And the uh, the Wetland Park that will be uh going out to bid here really shortly and will be completed this year as well. So we have, we continue to take on more and more park space and uh, with, with not any more people. So we, we would request that we have three new park workers. As you see that we kind of have in there, the landscape acres per F T E. Um, and these numbers include part-time as well. Uh, but we would request that we get full-time. They just have better, um, better skills and better. Um, loyalty to the city and stay longer when we have full-time employees. We put a little comparison there with some surrounding cities and what their landscaped acres per F T E are. Um, and you know, uh, it would be really great to get to those levels, but um, you know. Adding some park workers as we continue to take on more park space is certainly beneficial for that, for that uh, operation. So a couple of the um priorities that we have in the department, uh, in addition to that personnel. In our park maintenance division, uh, we, parks that were built before about two thousand sixteen have a, a unique. Uh, double check valve to prevent backflow contamination. And when they quit using those, it was kind of ruled out through the division of water quality that. Uh, you didn't have to replace them all right away, but you had to replace them as, as they failed. And we've really been lucky and have gotten by for a long time without having to do that. And now they're really pushing us to replace. Those and at least have a plan to replace those over the next couple of years. So the four hundred and seventy-five thousand is the cost for, for a contractor to do all of them. There are. Thirty-six or something, thirty-six different double check valves that need to be replaced. We do know that some of the smaller water lines, the one and two-inch water lines, our park crew can do. We would just need the funding for the materials. But our park staff can um, can manage those. They've actually done a couple. They're working on one right now at the Maverick Center. And they'll do one at Country Meadows Park as well, um, that are, that are kind of priority that have failed that we need to replace right now. Uh, but that four hundred and seventy-five thousand could certainly be spread over a couple of years um, to, to reduce the, the impact right away. Stonebridge Golf Course has, um, you know, they're twenty-five years old as well, a- as well as some of our other facilities. And they have wood, they have really nice waterways which have bridges across them. And they're wood bridges that uh are really deteriorating. And the probably even more, more problematic than the bridges themselves is the, there are steel pipes that run through the bridges. That connect the irrigation system from one side of the waterway to the other. And those steel pipes are deteriorating very badly and they, they're flaking apart and have, um, they really are a problem. The concern is that if we have, um, if we have one of those break completely, uh, we have to shut down the golf course. And we very well would have dead grass because we have no way to get irrigation across to the other side of, of the, of the area. So. We have not bid this project because we, it, it's a lot for this to be engineered. Uh, and, and our estimate is that um, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a bridge and there are thirteen bridges at, at Stonebridge that we need to, to do. Again, we can certainly do this over a couple of years, but there are a couple that are pretty critical. That would really make a huge impact um, to the golf course and we would have to uh shut down portions of the golf course. Potentially nine to sixteen holes because there would be no access if the bridge were out. So that's a, that's a priority and. We are happy to bid that. We would just want some direction on how you would want to go about that if you wanted it done all at once or done over a period of time. We would like those to be lightweight, probably fiberglass bridges to reduce the damage to the course when they're installed. The third item is a power conditioning system at the fitness center. Uh, as many of you may recall, uh, we have. Over, gone through an energy efficiency project uh at the fitness center and. The initial agreement with um, with the vendor who, who put this together was that the city, one of the city obligations was to install this power conditioning system and we just haven't done it. Yet. But the, but what's happening is we're have, we have a lot of power surges. We don't have really consistent power. And so. Our uh mechanical and electrical equipment is being fried with those surges. Including two of the generators that have come with this energy efficiency project. So we're working on figuring out what to do with the generators and how we're going to proceed with that. So we're working on figuring out what to do with the generators and how we're gonna proceed with that. But it, there's no reason to replace the generator and incur that expense if we don't do this power conditioning, because that very well could continue to happen and, and have to pay to replace those, those generators. So this is something that, that is, is a pretty high, a pretty high priority for us. If you've been to the Senior Recreation Center, you know that that's kind of a vulnerable population. And their elevator is quite old and is really hard to get parts for. We have been lucky to work through, through Jake and Fabian and they've gotten a bid for about a hundred thousand dollars to replace the elevator at, at the Senior Center. And just recently, we've gotten an updated service agreement that went up five hundred dollars this year because of the extra effort it takes for them to repair and maintain that, that elevator. And so having it go out, then that's, that's a really long period of time without one. And with that population, it's, it's pretty critical that we have that, that infrastructure repaired. Another thing that you may remember, we in Parks have never had a great capital replacement fund. This current fiscal year, we were awarded three hundred thousand dollars that we, that's for all the divisions. So that's Park Maintenance, the Fitness Center, Recreation, the Senior Center. We have helped Arts and Culture a little bit, even though that budget and those, those repairs fall under city facilities. But we, we would love to have that increase. So like I said, we have three hundred thousand dollars this year and we've been able to knock off a lot of smaller projects that the operational budgets for each division don't have, don't have within their own, their own ability to complete. Most of our facilities in Parks and Recreation are more than twenty years old. Our buildings, the Cultural Center, the Theater, both Golf Course Clubhouses and the Fitness Center, and certainly the Hartman Recreation Center, are well over twenty years old and need some, some pretty serious repairs. It's recommended through the National Recreation and Park Association that you have about ten percent of your operating budget, eight to ten percent of your operating budget as capital for capital repairs. And so that would put us in that one point one to one point four million dollar range. But we would just ask that we have that, that increased a little bit each year to get to the point that we have funding to replace. We're never gonna have the funding to replace irrigation systems or the bridges at, at Stonebridge, but we could start knocking off things like the power conditioning system and the double-check valves and things like that. And again, we probably couldn't do some of the very large items that we have as program mods, but we could certainly knock off a lot of the small projects that, that need to continue to happen. Carpet, paint, windows, Stonebridge Golf Course is in pretty good need of having their windows replaced. They leak, they have some serious building repair with stucco and other things. So that's our request to continue to up that special project funding to allow us to continue to, to make those improvements to the great city facilities that we have. Um, one, one of the other ones that is a, kind of a little bit more down the road is, is the irrigation systems at, at several city facilities, a couple of parks, city parks specifically and at Stonebridge Golf Course as well. And those are really large ticket items, but those are certainly out more than five years. But it's something certainly to keep on the radar that those are things that are gonna need to be replaced, probably in the five to eight-year range at several, at several facilities. Are there any questions? That's all I have.
Questions from the Council?
Um, the addition of three FTEs sounds like will result in some decrease in acres per employee, I think was the measure you used. But how many FTEs would you need ideally to bring that ratio down to what it is in our neighboring cities, as you showed in one of the first slides?
I would guess it was probably like six or seven to get down to that kind of twelve range, six or seven FTEs.
And that's if we stop?
That's if we stop adding more.
To develop more parks and cooler.
This FTE at twenty twenty-four does include the park properties that we anticipate bringing on this year.
But not additional three FTEs, right?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
The Utah Cultural Celebration Center, the theater outside, what are you planning to do? You know, you're already under, not twenty years and over, trying to do something like that. Can you tell us better about that?
The, the Cultural Center and the Theater both fall under city facilities. We have, there are definitely needs there and I believe they'll be addressed in, in John's presentation with admin next week. But there definitely are some challenges at those facilities. The, at the Cultural Center, there are some, some rooms that are kind of falling off the backside of the building that need to be secured. At the Theater, they certainly need to have seating and stage repairs and lighting, actually lighting at both facilities. So those will be addressed within the, the presentation for, through admin. But we have helped them a little bit with some of our capital or our special project money. We've done some projects for them, some things in, in the box office at the Theater, just to, to help them out, to help, because they don't have the funding in their operations either.
Do we use this quite often, the outside theater?
Oh, the amphitheater?
Amphitheater.
Um, we do, we do some summer concerts there and we would love to do more. There are some, there are some structural concerns there with where the ticket office is. And I, I think that'll be part of, of John's presentation as well. Yeah, but we'd, we'd love to do more but there, but we have some concerns with safety with some structural problems over there. Any other questions?
Don't look like it.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you.
All right, the Council Calendar. Was there any concerns? Okay, there's no concerns there. We'll go to any future, potential future agenda items.
I have one, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, Westside City Municipal Code is the title number two right there. I kind of wanted to review that with the, an outside attorney. So I just, you know, I want to support that, wanting to forward.
So that's hiring personnel?
Uh, it's about the city manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then hire an attorney like we did a few months ago?
Yeah, we can use that, is it Mark Tomlin?
Okay.
I don't know if Mark's the right guy, if we're gonna have somebody come in and help us with the city code. If that's what you're talking about.
Yeah. Sorry, which, which section did you say? Uh, city manager.
Is that section two?
Yes.
Okay.
You run this by me again, what are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm unclear what we're talking about.
Um, it's about Westside City Municipal Code, the title two, and about the city managers who want to review all the items below that city manager, under the city manager with the, an attorney, outside attorneys, kind of, we can explore or study about that a little bit.
Why would we need an outside?
I kind of independently, we didn't use a city manager that, I don't know, but that didn't just got a only, I think it's kind of our group independently.
Are you talking about understanding the duties and responsibilities of the city manager?
ULCT has an attorney on staff. There is very versed in city code and city managers.
That's nice.
No, I don't want to put out, uh, Law Department, the Legal Department here, they're doing a great job. Minutes is wonderful, air business is wonderful, it's great, but it's kind of like, yeah, you do want to outgroup.
Well, ULCT has their own attorney. He has worked for several cities and represented several cities.
So he's on staff all the time?
Yeah.
So we could just talk to Cam and see if anything's available? That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a service that's offered as part of our membership, affiliation, why not?
Okay.
So are you saying that we need to, to change that code?
I just want to try to understand more about, about the, the whole thing. You know, we don't want to run into a kind of misunderstanding in the future, something. We, you know, try to have a clear person about what's going on in that section, try to find out. So that very much all about.
I don't, I guess I just don't understand the need for this.
We're, we're all free to and, and should be taking it upon ourselves if this is of concern as individual council members with the mandate essentially to hire and, and manage a city manager. So if there's, we're free to look through the code at any given time. And if there are some things, Tom, that you feel are unclear to you or that you think are concerning that should be brought to the table, I'm certainly open to having discussions about that as a council. And if it did into involve or necessitate legal assistance or interpretation, I'm not opposed to that. But I don't know that we need to be retaining legal help for us to go through line by line or something like that, if, if that's what's being requested.
Yeah, I can agree with Alzma Fitziamane is that maybe if we with John's suggestion of using an attorney at league that's already there and part of our package and then come in and explain things that maybe some of the council members don't understand or how it works. I don't see a problem with that.
That'd be rather interesting.
Sounds like a plan.
So just to be clear, we want to have an outside attorney ideally from Lake of Cities and Towns to come to a meeting, meet with you as a group to answer questions or clarify this section of city code.
Yeah, but is that, is that the next question I want to ask you guys? Maybe you can support me or not, but I should ask you, we want to do that, the close meeting or is it open meeting?
I'm, I don't, I mean, I'm open to that if any of my colleagues here on the council have specific things or sections or lines that they would like clarified. But that's sort of our job and our homework to do that on our own. So I'm, I think the onus is on us. So I'm saying if you have issues, bring them up and if we need a lawyer, we'll get one to help us sort through it. But what, what are the issues or what, like, we need to bring together that list of issues and concerns first?
So I'm wondering if take a half hour in strategic plan time and just discuss the, the concerns? And then if there's enough that we need to get an attorney from league then? If there's enough concern from, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we should be reading through ourselves and then whatever, you know, Tom's specific needs are, let's discuss them. And yeah, if those are concerns that the rest of us share as well, or at least a majority of folks share, then, then we can take it from there. But yeah, I don't know that we need to retain an attorney and then set time to go through it line by line. So that should be on, on our own first, yeah.
Does that sound like a better plan? Discuss it first at Strategic and then
Decide if we needed.
If we need anybody to help change, yeah.
Yeah, I like that better.
That work? Not getting as many yeses as no's, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, it's fine. I think the league is more than willing to help us, so whether it's hourly or later.
Okay. So if we'll just set some time aside for that?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
And this is just a desire to have a clearer understanding.
Yeah, you could put it that way, clear understanding.
Right. And I do think it would be beneficial to have specific lines or, or sections in there that you want clarification on, so.
I think with that Jake, you mentioned about we're gonna yeah, yeah, do a homework plus.
Yeah, come prepared.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll clarify, I mean, if it, if league just provides this as a service, I don't see a problem with them coming at the beginning, but if we're paying hourly, then I do see a problem with it coming for all just the hashing out without a consensus.
We can check on that.
Okay. Any other potential future agenda items?
I have one, Mayor. On the Veterans Memorial, um, there's another phase in the works and I would, wondering if we could get an update on that phase? And also the the budget on that, on phase two, whether or not, yeah, just an update on where we are.
Okay. So I will let you know that Harry James passed away this last weekend. And so he will no longer be pushing it, but I'm sure somebody will start pushing it in his stead and move forward with that. So we'll keep that moving forward, because I think the statue is pretty much done, isn't it?
Not sure.
We'll get a report on that too.
Certainly.
So, yeah, his service is on, I think he got emails, but is this Saturday at the Cultural Center? Well, eleven for the viewing and the funeral starts at one. Okay, any other future agenda items or reports?
I have something I wanted to ask. In the past, we've had a transcriptionist for the Strategic Plan Meeting. Is that something you still want?
Ask Nicole that she wanted recorded and then have to.
It would take a lot longer if I did that, just in between my other duties. We did look at the cost and it would be like two thousand-ish to have someone attend and do like a word-for-word transcript, if that's what you guys are looking for.
Did we record it?
It's, it's recorded.
Like you Zoom?
Yes.
Zoom transcodes it pretty, pretty well.
It's just hard when, with names, I think, but yeah, I mean, that's definitely something we could try.
Oh, if we did that and then just went back and fixed the names?
I, I think it's probably fine the way it is. I, I had a video recording just last week that was on Zoom and it, yeah. It's like AI in our, our photos.
Misspell, please.
Misspells.
So yeah, that, that's an option. We talked about years and years ago, more of a very descriptive summary was put together. And then at one point, it was asked, can we have that be more word-for-word and have it actually transcribed? And so that's kind of why we're asking, what, what would you like us to do this time? We, we can try something that may not be perfect, but gets the points across or.
Has anyone used the transcription?
I don't know that we'll ever know, because are they on the internet, that's, we can just go pull it up? And read the minutes?
For the, the last strategic plan, yes.
Yeah, so you don't know how many people.
It was like five hundred pages, but yeah.
We don't have a, a counter on, on who accesses our pages.
Not that.
We can check IT, but we may be able to.
Yeah.
I think it was more the council just wanted it verbatim instead of a summary. So it, it, it's kind of whatever you guys.
I'm fine with the summary.
You could Zoom and the summary.
Okay, let's maybe do that then, Zoom and then the summary will fix anything that was off by Zoom.
Yes.
Okay, because I will admit, I've looked at all meetings and they were summaries instead of word-for-word. And it's very hard to understand what went on in study session and regular meeting. And so, and for future references, it is nice to have all that detail.
Will it be on YouTube so we could go back and? Will it be on YouTube so we could go back and watch it again?
It's gonna be live streamed like any other public meeting? Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Reading it.
Yeah, and it's a little outdated, I guess.
Can do that, easy search if you have a PDF, that's true. Otherwise, you're scrolling through eight hours or whatever hours, many hours.
Joe Russell, do you know what we're doing? I believe so, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Council reports. Yes.
Ended a couple of things these last couple of weeks. A Monticello Academy. We mentioned, I would already tried their uh parking during the day, not even when the parents were there. And uh, yeah, there's problems, but they were awarded, uh they were participating with a. Daily Act of Kindness group, it's a nationwide group. And they were challenged to do ten thousand acts of kindness during the month of December. They actually ended at forty four thousand. So uh they came out to honor them as being a daily act of kindness school. And uh. It's a lot of energy with kids and everything else, but it was one of the. Disciplined assemblies I've seen in elementary school, and I've seen a few. But uh they did, you know, they called a couple of them up. Uh Abby Cox, first lady was there, and she called a couple of them out out of the audience. She said, what was your act of kindness? What did you do to somebody, or what did somebody do to you? And one of them said, well, somebody complimented me on my hair. And you know, it's got you thinking, you know, these acts of kindness aren't big giant things, they're just. Things that you you look for, and as you look for them, you do more of them, just because you're looking for them. The other one said, I uh. Teacher told me I did a good job. And she was like first, second grade. It was uh those types of acts of kindness, but it was well attended. I talked to the director of it, said, you know, we can do this as a city too, if you wanted. And would be happy to come out and have a study meeting or something, explain to you how you could do it and put it out for a full city. And I told him I'd mention it, I told him the next night, didn't have a study meeting the next night. So uh. We can look at it, talk about it, see if we wanna do it, and I can get back to him, I. I do know who he is. Uh secondly, Will and I attended the the preview presentation. Of A Tale of Two Cities over at the. Performing Arts Center. Still can't get over calling it Carlin Hall, but uh. Very well done. Got to be a little long, but that was just after a long day of work, but uh it was a. Well done. Production. Very, very good acting. Lights, sound and everything. It was well done, it's one of those. I hate to mention it, but it it would rival those that happened at another theater. Program a little farther south of us. It used to be a little farther north of us before it was here. And then uh I attended the Chambers Legislative Roundup. Saturday and uh. The legislators. Aren't even sure exactly what's going on right now, but they said it's. There are a lot of things in the works, a lot of things kind of flowing. And so we're not sure just what the flow will be. But Senator Fillmore, I think I can quote him, he said, uh first thing he said, there will be a tax cut. So we look forward to that. And uh. He also said that uh housing and homelessness and uh total housing bills and everything are looking at. Smaller houses on smaller lots, possibly telling us. We need to allow modular housing. In case you build it faster and it's smaller and it's cheaper and therefore it's more affordable. Of course, Senator Fillmore has never been on the city committee, senator or anything else, so. We'll go from there, Senator McKay. He said the. It feels like the session is smoother this year than it's ever been. You know, we don't hear, we hear two or three bills and that's about it, so it it may be a little smoother. And then he talked a little bit about flag and he's also working on the NHL. And I took the opportunity afterwards to walk up to him and say, why is the Maverick Center never mentioned? Well, it's too small, so we've had two crowds of over ten thousand people last week. For hockey. Well, it's too small, they want twenty five thousand, I said, well, how many does the Delta Center hold? I don't know, I went home and looked it up, it's only eighteen thousand.
And when they, when they put the seating for the ice, it's only twelve thousand.
Yeah, and that's only two thousand more than we have, and we have sidelines. They don't, I've been up to the Delta Center on on NHL game, and I told him that, I said, I. Couldn't see from my seat, I had to move around to see, and that's not what a fan wants. Himmed and nodded and said, well, they want twenty five thousand, I said, well. They could use a ten thousand arena right now and build their twenty five thousand, and we could probably find them a hundred acres.
There you go.
But he, well, they're not talking about it, they didn't say, well, that's because Mr. Smith doesn't know we're here. So, but it was a. I've been to them in the past, and it was about half the crowd that we usually have. In fact, we used to hold them weekly and have a bigger crowd, and this year they're holding two of them. That one and one on the plane for it.
Well, I know the league meetings of the Legislative Affairs has really tackled a lot of them, so that might be just not a need for. Triplet, could seeing it three times in one week.
And I used to do that.
Yeah.
But there were still about more that used to be there, so it's. Done kind of the way of the Western Growth Foundation.
There you go. Okay, anybody else?
Um I, earlier in the meeting, we were asked to, um I think ponder was the word. On the the future terms of our waste collection contract, and I'm happy to accept that homework assignment, but I'm wondering if. Any of my colleagues would be interested in requesting a communication to help us a little more formally. Understand the current state of our trash collection, um the blue container recycling weather. Situation in China that we had talked about for a long time has changed, are we still, um you know, how that works, that is working? With recycling and maybe even touch on the um, is it momentum or the glass recycling? Um and how that's, you know, what is the uptake in that bin across the city, and is that? Um working or not, I know here it is, my wife got one of those little cans and. The neighbors come and bring their glass over here, it's full every time they come and pick it up, but it's just a little technique. But I'm 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 wondering if anyone else would be interested in talking more about our current state. How things are going and what the recycling and trash collection and waste uh dump, or what do we call it? Uh landfill situation is in our state, and I'd just like to get a little more.
So that contract's next year, so in the next month or two, not necessarily before strategic plan, or would you like it before strategic plan?
I don't know about the right timing necessarily, um I don't think it has to be in there with um strategic plan. We still have little time, right, to make some of those adjustments to contract or considerations to that contract, but. Yeah, I don't know about the timing, if it has to be immediate or not, but.
Okay, I would like to add one thing to that list, if I could, to. Give us a background of what happened in our last contract negotiation, because I know the service provider at the time did not even bid. And so what the bid possibilities would look like? Okay. I did go to Ost, it's over by Crown Burger, you go down Parkway Boulevard across from uh Parkway Park. There's a lot of cars parked on the street, because this business, it's A U S T on their sign. And it's two different, they're blue and red letters, and anyway. I was invited last week to go see their production, and they do stints, they do the catheter. For the heart, to be able to put in your stints, your valves, ablations, do all that stuff, and. nominal what they do inside that, what looks like a teeny building, but they've grown enough, they have offices in Lake Park. They're looking for another building, um they're gonna meet with staff this week, and then they have another building over by. Printers Row, I think, it's either that or in the president complex, so they're growing big, they love West Valley. They'll just be in like four or five different buildings in West Valley to accept their growth, but they went from a hundred employees to over two hundred. And they're planning on going to over three hundred, so really good business in the city and. They like West Valley because we have the employees, so it's a really good relationship. So that was my only report. Do we have need for a closed session? Do we have time for a closed session? Okay. So put that off? So we just have one more action item? All in favor, say aye? And we stand adjourned, thank you.